All right, I'm called to meeting of the Philomena Planning Commission to order. First order of business is approval of the minutes from April 21st. Anybody have any comments on those meeting minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minutes, April 21st. And then 25.
25, and one second. Paul Secher. Okay. For the discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those, okay, so let's move on to our new business this evening. Oh, yeah, forgot about that.
I can do a quick one. Darlene Rose.
Here.
Doc Up.
Here.
Van Hutzeker.
Here.
Tim Laup.
Here.
And Sarah, sorry, I forgot your full last name. Collier Mitchell.
Collier Mitchell.
Collier Mitchell.
Here.
And Chris Workman and Steph.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to new business. Welcome, everybody. I would like to now open a hearing for case file PC, I believe it is 25-04. And the 25-04 is a variance to reduce the side yard setback from five feet to four foot one inch for an existing house. The applicant and owner to set the Deirdre Robertson.
Robertson.
Robertson. First, the description of the order of proceedings this evening. First will be a staff report, and then there'll be additional correspondence. Then the applicant's presentation if he chooses to. Public testimony in favor of the application, public testimony in opposition to the application, neutral testimony, rebuttals by the applicant, questions for staff if any from the planning commission. Then at that point, we will close the public hearing. And the record will be closed for testimony. No other testimony or comments will be heard unless the planning commission reopens the testimony for a specific question. Plan commission deliberations, and then a final decisions. For those testifying this evening, you can keep your comments to five minutes. I think would be fair for this evening. If you wish to speak, we will first hear from those in person followed by online testimony. For those in attendance, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder, in this case, to the manager. For those online, I will ask that you click.
We don't have a bad line, we need to get that.
Okay, so we're good?
Yep.
All right, and any questions should be addressed through me. And please state both your name and city of residence for the record. As the hearing will be recorded, please keep your testimony concise and to the point. The planning commission will make a decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued to a time and date certain in the future, this will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Criteria. The criteria that apply to decisions are listed in the staff report. These are criteria the planning commission must use in reaching the decision. Your testimony and any evidence must be directed after these criteria and other criteria you believe apply to the decision. Please describe how your comments relate to the criteria. Again, a decision on this applicant must be based on the applicable criteria. Despite the importance of other issues or concern, the planning commission can only base its decision on whether the evidence shows the applicant complies with the criteria. If the, if the decision can be appealed, the planning commission's decision may be appealed to the city council. And the planning commission shall make final recommendation on this fact to the city council. Failure to raise any issue in significant detail to allow planning commission and the party's opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the land use board of appeals based on this issue. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other concerns relating to the proposed conditions of the approval is sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue precludes the action for damages in circuit court. Okay. General disclosures now, I ask the members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts of interest, including any site visits. Please indicate the nature and the extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anybody have any?
No idea.
Nope.
Okay, then we will now hear from the staff report.
Terrific. Staff report was completed and posted prior to the seven days before tonight's hearing. So I've had a chance to read through that. I'm not going to read through the findings of fact, but that's kind of the background basis for what went on, so I probably have a chance to go through those as we heard at the beginning, what we're really looking for just to sum it down is a variance approval, which would reduce the required five yard, five foot side yard setback down to the four foot one inch, which is what is currently existing today. And I'll get into a little bit of details on that, but that's kind of the short of it. For a type C variance, there is criteria that we're looking at. I'll just say here, our associate planner put the staff report together, I reviewed it, hope that you'd be here to present tonight, but he's not feeling well, so I'm pitching in for him a little bit. So I may read a little bit more than I typically like to tonight, but want to make sure that we get on the record the criteria. So starting on page five, which is, I'm using page numbers on the, the big white page numbers in the perquish triangle. Again, I'll try to make more than we need to here. We did hold the pre-application conference with the applicant. The application was submitted by applicant. We did waive the fee on this. City councils anxious and eager to help with these lot line adjustments getting done. So we've agreed to waive the fee on these. On a lot of these, they've already paid a lot line adjustment application fee. Those lot lines didn't get taken care of within the year that they were supposed to have. So for a lot of these property owners and for this property specifically, this is the second time they've come to the city with some type of a land use application, so we felt inappropriate, I just waived the fee on this one. The, let's see, public hearing was scheduled for tonight, which is what we're holding now. The notice of the hearing D, we did provide notice, Lealani takes care of that for us. All of the requirements within the development code for neighboring, neighboring property owners or adjacent property owners, and to the general public as well, as well as the sign posted in front of the property, which was really popular with the neighbors, I know. And the homeowner wasn't real excited about having the big old sign in the front yard, but so it goes. Where it's a new requirement we have even for a type two, type three is put the sign in front of the property so everybody can see it. So that was very fruitful, I guess. Everybody knew there was something going on, right? The variance chapter itself is kind of the next criteria. I'll just read this, just if I can read it quick and summarize it. The purpose of the chapter on variances is to provide flexibility to development standards in recognition of the complexity and wide variation of site development opportunities and constraints. The variance procedures are intended to provide flexibility while ensuring that the purpose of each development standard is met. So for the class C variance specifically, there's a list there purposes that class A is fairly minor, those are allowed, that's like, you know, if you've got a bay window that sticks out a half a foot or foot into the setback, that's just a type A variance. Those are done administratively. They submit the application, we review it, make a decision. It's very black and white, cut and dry. A class B variance, there's a specific list, I think there's about 16 or 17 very specific variances that are allowed, and each of them have their own criteria that you have to meet in order for that variance to be approved. This setback current didn't fall within one of those, like in 15 or 17 class Bs, and so it falls into what we're doing tonight is a class C variance. All class C variances come before the planning commission for approval, which is why we're here tonight to review this file. And again, again, try not to overread here on the type C applications, just as I kind of explained them. For the applicability, the variant standards are intended to apply to individual platted recorded lots, which this is. Applicant who proposes to vary specifications for lots yet to be created through a subdivision process is, cannot use this. This is not a new subdivision, it's an existing, so that one doesn't apply. And variance shall not be approved where the permitted use of a land use district would be the variance, and that's not the case here. That'd be if they were zoned residential and the variance they're asking for is to have some type of industrial use there. That's not what they're asking for, it's just the setback. So for applicability, none of those really apply and we're okay to move forward. And C, we're talking about approvals, process, and the criteria. It's type three, it's covered in our code, that talks about, again, the notifications that we give, the hearing process we follow, we're following all of those. Let me just read this summary that Michael provided here, I think it's insightful, and I want to read a whole lot more after this. It says after it was determined, I'm on the middle of page six, after it was determined that the abutting neighbor would not consent to the proposed lot line adjustment, which had been proposed previously, this would have prevented the necessity of this variance. The property owner submitted this application for variance, written statement from the property owner explaining the conditions requiring this variance request. The situation is unique, as some of the houses on this block were built in such a way that these properties did not meet side yard setbacks on the north side. The abutting neighbor did not consent to the proposed lot line adjustment initiated by the city, which would have resolved the setback issue. So the placement of the house was not the fault of the applicant, and the proposed variance will meet fire code for structures, so the criteria is met. So we have, the fire code is that you've got to have 10 feet between buildings and three foot between the building and the property line. The city's development code is it's a five foot side yard setback period. So we're not looking for variance to the state fire code, we're just looking for variance from the city's development code, there's that five foot side yard setback to reduce that on a four foot one inch, which is the existing setback that the house is at from the side yarder now. I'll put in the back is what we originally tried to do is the, the property line between, or the distance between the property line and the house to the north is larger than five foot, right? So the goal was to try to shift this property line between the Robeson property and the property north, shift this property line north about 11 inches, and it would give the five foot setback required between the property line and Roberson's property, and we would still maintain the minimum five foot setback between the property line and the property to the north. The property to the north's got a new property owner, they moved in after all of this happened, so they moved in. You know, there were some disclosures about property line, lot line adjustment, I would argue that they maybe weren't fully understood at the time, but where we're at is that property owner said, I don't want to adjust my property line. Their, their property line and their house is compliant. They've got more than five foot on the side, they've got more than five foot on the other side, they're 100% compliant, so there's nothing the city can really do to force them to do a lot line adjustment with their neighbor and lose some of their land. So now we're stuck with the property to the south, which is kind of just stuck. They've got now a property line and a lot line, or a lot line setback of five feet that they can't meet, and the neighbor's not going to help them meet it by doing that lot line adjustment. So they really are kind of stuck, and again, going through this, not really the fault of the current property owner, not really the fault of the property owner to the north, it's just that the first attempt to do a lot line adjustment has failed, because the property to the north isn't willing, and now we've got a property line owner to the south that we're trying to get into compliance. The way that we're doing that is through this variance application. So hopefully that kind of explains it a little bit better. Talking about variance being based on the criteria, not material detrimental, the difference between five foot and four foot one inch, Michael argues isn't detrimental to the requirements of the setback. The real disadvantage is, you know, if you want to have a four foot or five foot swinging fence or gate to get to backyard, at four foot one inches, you're going to have a little bit narrower gate to get to the backyard. But, but short of that, you know, Michael determined that it wasn't really materially or materially detrimental. Letter B here is a hardship to develop exists, which is peculiar to the lot size or shape, topography, since the lands are other similar stances related to the property over which the application has no control, or the applicant has no control. Although there's not like a creek, or a tree, or some physical reason why it's there, the determination Michael, the planners made here is that the applicant, the homeowner essentially has received the house that already is built, that already has these lot lines in place, and it's not really a matter of the ground being, and even I think it's just a matter of there's a physical house and there's a physical lot line, line on a map for lot line that they can't control, and it wasn't their fault. So Michael's arguing in, in letter B that that criteria is met, this wasn't a self-imposed issue that came up that they're trying to deal with. For letter C, the use proposed will be the same as permitted on the title and city standards, it'll be maintained. It's single family home, it'll continue a single family home, so we don't see an issue there. The existing physical and natural systems, such as traffic, drainage, natural resources, parks, won't be adversely impacted. Again, Mike argues that there won't be any adverse impact to any of those other systems. E is very specific about not being self-imposed, again, this was done by the developer, not by the homeowner, and so we don't believe this is self-imposed. And the variance request is the minimum variance that would be needed to alleviate the hardship. Quite a bit there again about trying to do the lot line adjustment, that didn't work, we can't force a homeowner to do a lot line adjustment, they're not willing to do. And so this is the minimum variance that would be needed, is that four foot one inch setback, which is the existing actual physical setback today, that would be needed in order to resolve this issue and have the home come into compliance. So conclusion, we're looking for foot one inch setback, which is a variance from the five foot that's required, the type C. And staff recommends approval of the proposed variance. So I'll conclude my comments there. If you have any specific questions for me to clarify the staff report, I can take those now, if not, I can answer questions during your deliberation as well.
Is there any questions from?
I have a question. Is this, was this pretty common? You mentioned there's a number of different lot line adjustments that were needed in the subdivision, and so this isn't like in a one-off kind of situation?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So unfortunately, it's not the only one. This development moved forward with starting construction of homes while the street was still under construction. In an effort to have streets and, you know, the infrastructure on the homes get done at roughly the same time. The developer had done this in phase one, and it worked actually quite well. 15th Street got done, and all the homes got down, and people were able to move in rather than to the street first, and then wait nine, 10 months for homes to get built, then move people in. So what worked in phase one, we started in phase two. As the street was still getting finished and homes were getting finished, people, we gave, the city issued certificates of occupancy for those homes. And it wasn't until people started wanting to put in fences and determine property lines that it was discovered that the stakes in the ground that everybody thought were lot lines actually weren't lot lines, they were actually off, and that many of the homes had been essentially placed in the wrong spot. And so I think there was a reliance maybe on GPS as opposed to actually going out and physically surveying things, and then there's a couple other reasons floating out there on why that happened. But at the end of the day, the agreement to allow the developer to move forward with putting the foundations in place, the city agreed to that at the, at the developer's own expense, right? And so it was kind of their risk, their expense, if anything was wrong, the developer agreed at that time that they were going to take care of it, move forward. As soon as we noticed it happen, the developers agreed that, yep, my fault, they got put in the wrong spot. Developers agreed to pay for application fees, pay for, you know, we've got new, get new legal descriptions, new appraisals on some of the homes before they can get through. So in total, I think there's 12 properties in total that have this lot line issue where they're not compliant today. The city's first attempt was to try to do lot line adjustments for every single one of them kind of simultaneously, and we just had trouble getting every one of the 12 neighbors on the same page at the same time moving that forward. And so now we're looking to break it down. The city council's really concerned about trying to make this right, so they've tasked me, and I've tasked Michael to work with these property owners individually and look for small areas, remember, we can do some variances like this, and give some more leeway and try to get everybody compliant. It does look like this is the only property that Michael's working, that's looking to have to do this variance, and once this is in place, most of the other property owners that he's been in contact with are willing to move forward with the lot line adjustments, but this is the northernmost one, so he adjusts first, and then the others can kind of adjust after. So I wish it was the only one, it's not, it's, there's several more that are going to follow, but I don't know that any others are going to need this variance. I think the others will be able to do the lot line adjustment between the two neighbors.
And the neighbor to the north that didn't consent is a resale, not an original.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Okay, clear, thank you.
Okay, is there any other additional correspondent beyond those items included in the agenda for this?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right. At this point, the applicant, if you wish to make a presentation?
I'd like to defer that. If you guys have questions or need more context, I'd, I'd like to give a presentation at that time, but I don't want to, I don't want to throw any more negativity than I have to, if that makes sense.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so at this point, we're going to move on to the public testimony. Anybody have any comments in favor of the application? Do you have any? I see what that one is. Yeah, I got this. So that's, that's the only one we have right now.
Correct.
And we don't have anything. Okay, all right. And, and in opposition, does anybody have any opposition to the applicant wish to speak? You can hold, we have here from Charlotte Williams and?
I think there's some confusion. Mine is PC 2503, which I got a letter that I was, you guys were going to talk about annexing islands into the.
Next item, yep, sorry. Sorry, you didn't get the notice out, we actually had to cancel that one, so sorry, I made you sit there, I thought you were on this. That's been canceled, we're moving it on, yeah, sorry. I should have seen that, I apologize. We're bumping that out, we had some legal notices that didn't get out to all of the property owners, so we couldn't hold the meeting this evening, so it's been bumped out like a month. So I'll reach out to you, I've got your individual contact information, so I'll reach out to you individually and make sure that you know when that gets rescheduled for.
Okay, because I called you about this, and you never returned my call, so I'm sure.
I've got you. Yeah, I'll reach out to you, sorry about that, sorry to make you sit through this first part. Not at all. No, you're good, thank you, sorry about that.
Does anybody have any neutral testimony? Okay, then I think we can, we can close the public. We can close the public hearing portion. It's not here in the script, but I believe that's what we do at this point. Uh, is there a ask about the.
It could ask here. So they kind of offered that.
All right. Uh, ask if, if any of the commission has any questions of the applicant. At this time, do we have any questions of the applicant? Okay.
Go free.
Okay.
Did you discover that because you want to put a fence in? Is that?
Yes. So we, we wanted to put a fence in and we went and we were looking for the monuments, you know, to kind of tie a string and, and whatnot. And. There were no monuments. Um, and so that's when we discovered there were no survey had been performed. Uh, they had, they, yeah, I think they had relied as Chris said on GPS. And put, you know, unofficial, just kind of white stakes, you know, that you get at like Home Depot in the ground. And then that's what they had based the foundation placement on. And that's what I think they had based the foundation inspection on to, to determine if we had the five foot setback. Um, so yeah, we, we want, that's, you know, we moved in, we, we had a home that passed all of its inspections and then we went to go and put in a fence and there were no monuments. Um, and then at post survey, they said, hey, uh, wait a minute, you guys have a problem. Um, you may want to wait to build your fence. And we did, we waited for quite a while. Um, and, and currently, I'm not going to go into currently, but. Yeah, this is, this is sort of we, we, I, my opinion is we've exhausted every option. You know, we tried to do a lot line adjustment with the previous owner. She was, she was. On board, but, uh, there were, there were processing delays and, um, she ended up selling the house. Um, that got processed through and. Got a new owner there and the new owner doesn't want to play ball. So, uh, here we are trying to do a variance. So it's, it, yeah, ideally we just get into compliance, but that's, that's just, I, I can't. So here we are.
Anybody, any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
I would just say, not give you a question, but. Uh, thank you for your willingness to. Wade through this with us and. Hopefully it'll work out all right for you.
Okay. And, uh. Staff response to, uh, testimony. I have a question to staff. Uh, the applicant indicating that, that there was no monument set for the corners of the lots. Prior to the construction of the, that's because of rough grading still occurring.
It's because the street hadn't been accepted by the city yet. We don't typically call for monuments till the street's been accepted by the city. The asphalt had got laid, but there were two storm pipes that were supposed to have been placed under the street that didn't get placed. And so Public Works refused to accept the city until that all got done. So street was in, had been inspected. I mean, it was safe. The homes were in, they'd been inspected. Everything was safe. The only thing that was outstanding. Was the two sewer or two storm pipes that hadn't been installed.
And they were possibly going into the, into the easement.
They were going to get moved over to, no, they were going to get moved over to the, the developer's plan was to move them over to future phase. Into like 17th street and just not have them go in 16th street. So because the street didn't get approved by the city. The, they never called for any monuments to get placed, but yet there were still homes that were being sold based on. The legal descriptions that were provided based on. The plat map, not based on survey.
Okay. I'm going to change my question a little bit. I understand what you're saying about the monuments. You were talking about the monuments of the street. Is it standard procedure within the city of Falmouth? That the four corners of a rectangular lot are, are monumented or is it? Standard procedure only to monument street. To set that. I guess that's where I'm trying, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, it's four corners.
Okay.
Four corners.
So and they, that was not going to be done until the street was completed.
Sorry, it's four corners or in a larger subdivision, the engineer, the survey is going to show where those monuments are to be placed. It's not always all four corners of every.
Okay.
But it'll be, it'll be called out in the.
Okay.
In the site plan. And in this case, what was called in site plan, even that was going to get installed because the street hadn't been approved yet.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions of staff? All right. Um, is there any requests for continuance? Man, guess we'd be knowing. Let's get this, let's make a decision this evening, if at all possible. All right. Is there any request to hold the record open? Not hearing any. Okay. Um, so now I officially close the public hearing. All right. At this point, the commissioners deliberate on evidence and testimony presented.
I kept just a little bit. Sorry. Go here.
What is that? I, oh, so, okay, yes. If no request for continuance or hold, or for holding the record open. Then ask the applicant if you waive the right to submit a written argument. Does the applicant waive his seven day period to submit a final written argument after closing of the record?
I waived that.
Yes. All right. Now we can go on to deliberation. Anybody want to have any comments and want to start?
Obvious. You have to happen here. To approve this, uh, variance for this homeowner.
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, in my opinion, I think staff, you know, the most critical item that staff went through. And determined was the fire issue and we're, and we're. We're totally okay with that. We're, we're within what the fire code says. So yeah, I would, I would take no exception to. To, uh, approving this for myself. Nobody have any other questions? Okay. Well, somebody want to, uh. Exercise a motion. There's the, uh, recommended motion there on page eight.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve the variance in PC twenty five dash O four to reduce the southern side yard setback from five feet to four feet, one inch. Based on the findings of fact as contained in the staff report dated June sixth, twenty twenty five, with the recommended condition of approval.
Okay. Any additional deliberation or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hey, congratulations, Seth. You now can go out and build a fence.
So we actually already did. That was, that was. But we built it in the post PLA location. So we've got, you know, our, our previous neighbor. Agreed. So we had, we built the fence at the spot we thought it would be, you know, at.
You gotta take it apart and move it eleven inches.
Yeah, seven and a quarter.
A quarter.
Yeah. So, uh, we'll be giving, uh, M and M fence and deck, uh, a call, I guess, and. Get down to that and build a new fence.
You could, we could have just left, not said anything. And you would have it where it should have been.
Yes. That is correct. But that's, it, it's water under the bridge. I'm compliant and I'm. If I'm out fifteen hundred or however many bucks, I'm out however many bucks.
Thank you for your patience. All right. Um. Staff update. Anything here that need to. Pretty straightforward what's on the soil.
Yeah, I'll just note we're shifting. Um, we've started using that. Excela, which is the. Online program that the state provides us for our billing permits. There's a planning module that we've started using. Uh, Leilani's into it deep and she's getting the rest of us trained up. Um, it's when you. When you use Excela, it, I did, um, assigns a. File number, for lack of a word, it's not a file number. It's a record number is what it calls it in the computer system. Um, but we're going to start aligning our planning file numbers with the record number that Excela assigns it. It's still going to look very similar. It's like twenty five, but then it's like. Four or five zeros. And then you're, you know, number one, number two, number three. So it's got room for up to like 10,000 files in any given year, which we would never use. Um, so we're going to, just a small modification, you might see over the next couple of months. Um, this RN twenty five oh seven, for example, is record number twenty five dash seven, which is different than our previous standard was. P for planning file, like twenty five oh five. Uh, the P meant it was just a planning file, type two, type one. PC meant planning commission. So PC twenty five oh one meant it was the first file for the year that was coming to the planning commission. It's a type three or type four. So we're going to go away from the P or the PC and you're just going to see RN. Twenty five dash oh seven, RN twenty five dash oh eight on down the line. Um, one thing that's kind of helpful on that is if you read through these, you can kind of read. Um, they're a little bit in order. I started reformatting, was going to put them in order with all the RN numbers up front and then I. Um, ran out of time. So they're listed in there. You'll see seven, eight. Nine is skipped. Why is nine skipped? Probably because, oh no, the nine's there, ten's there. One of these is skipped. Eleven.
Eleven's.
Eleven's, why is eleven missing? It was probably like a type one. It was a house or something that got assigned a number and it doesn't come to the planning commission. And we didn't drop it in there. Or some of these are duplicates. I think anytime we do a pre-application meeting, it also gets assigned an RN number. So it'll have an RN number for the pre-application meeting and then we'll have an RN number later for when they actually submit application. So all that to say, we're just changing the number and scheme just a little bit. It's, hopefully it's not overly confusing. Um, it's mostly internal so that we know what to reference. We do put on, um. Notices that go out, we ask them to reference that number. We used to say the planning file number when I'll say the record number. Um, so just a little vocabulary shift on our end. We refer into planning files as records and record numbers rather than planning files. And we'll probably use both interchangeably, but that's what the new number in the RN twenty five oh seven means. Twenty five is going to be consistent for the year twenty twenty five. Next year, everything will be twenty twenty six. So it'll be RN twenty six. We start with one and we work our way up. So you can easily tell how many planning files we've taken in up to date and we'll just kind of roll that way. So. All that said, if you've had a chance to read through any of those, if anything jumps out at you, happy answering questions. I'm going to. Jump to and maybe cut off a question in that sometimes. We'll have pre-application meetings that we'll note here and we'll be very vague as to those pre-application meetings. That's very intentional. Um, I've said this to planning commission before, if we're going to be overly generous with telling you all the information that's going on. Then we ask for a little bit of return and that recognition that a lot of times. A business owner or property owner may not want in the entire world, knowing what they want to do with their property until they are ready to. And having a pre-application meeting, although legally, those are publicly disclosable. That's something that's going to air other people's laundry if we don't need to. So I always. My stance is always it's the property owner's story to tell, not mine. So I don't want to be the one, the first one to tell people. Um, so we'll note things on here. If we're using vague language or say the property owner had a pre-application meeting about a commercial development. Don't ask us what's the commercial development because I'll probably just say, I'd rather not disclose, right? So. Again, we try to be very respectful of business owners, property owners in town, especially the business owners that are, you know, the. The, um. Pharmacy who was looking to buy a new property. We had a preapplication with them early, early on. Way too premature for anybody else in town to really know that the pharmacy was looking to buy a new building, right? There's some. Strategic competitive advantage to lot letting everybody know, including their competitors know that they're looking to move locations and buy a building, right? So. Excuse me, one not to be their story to tell, not ours. So. We were very vague. We had a preapplication meeting, future commercial tenant, left it at that. Um, so again, you can always ask, but just know if I ever. I'm slow to respond. That's why I'll just say, look, I'd rather not say it's a. Business that are looking to put up a building and rather not disclose who it is at this point. So. Other than that, we try to be very open about what we're working on, what's going on in town. Any questions on any of those? Couple of issues. Got a minor modification for the RV park. They're wanting to do phases around all of it all at once. They want to bring it in. In phases. So that's under review right now. A couple of things out, so.
Seth, you want to know this going up over on nineteenth?
Nineteenth, yep.
I live over there. Should I refuse myself?
No, it's going to be financially. Um, impacted by it, or if you have some strong bias.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, I was, I had some financial interest in it. That's why I had to refuse myself.
And it's a minor modification. So you won't have any in say anyway, other than the individual property owner could submit comments, but. Minor modifications are type two. They're. To prepare the minor. Hence the name. My modification.
We have anything else? I do have a couple of things I want to say before we close, but we have anything else?
Nothing else. We had planned, well, sorry. Yes. We had planned originally to have a hearing on the island annexations. That went to legal for review. We'd missed a couple. Well. We have a new attorney and our new attorney would like things done differently than the old attorney did. So. And we proposed to do it the way that the old attorney had had us do it. Our new attorney said, let's do it a different way. Um, which we hadn't prepared for. So we're going to give ourselves a little more time and.
The same, with the same company?
No, different, you know.
Oh, exactly.
Jim, the last time we did a island annexation was with Jim Brewer in his office.
Oh, 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 oh.
We followed certain steps. So we followed those steps this way, sent it all to our new attorney and our new attorney said, nah. Yes, but let's do these other things as well. And we hadn't done those things. So.
Anticipating that next month?
Next month. Yeah. Next month we'll have island annexations.
So it's going to be a while before we get back into our, our code standards.
We've got, so I can give an update there as well. Um, I'm actually applying for a grant to bring on a. Um, planning consultant to just look at our code. Um, revisions that need to be done. Um. There's enough there that one, I don't have time for and two, I'm not a hundred percent. Secure that I'm up to date with all of the new. Regulations that, um, DLCD has been putting out recently. Um, and I want to make sure for updating the code that we update the code to the current standard and I can't confidently do that without doing a lot of research. So. We're going to bring on a consultant that is doing that every day and make sure that the changes we're making are reflective of what. We wanted them to be and also compliant with all the new state regulations and codes. So. We're going to kind of pin in it for now. I got to get the grant. I got to get a consultant on board. I got to do the data dump. Have a couple of meetings and then we'll start seeing. Um, some more stuff come back. I'm still. Optimistically hopeful by the end of the year, we'll start seeing that coming through again. I, I won't guarantee we'll have hearings by the end of the year, but. Um, you know, somebody coming on full time and doing that. And I'm hoping we're talking about, you know, weeks to a month as opposed to months to a year. So. Hopefully it's more progress.
How large, how large of an effort was the grant providing? I mean, an hour. So you're looking at eighty hours, hundred and sixty hours. Um, what, I mean, approximately.
Yeah. I'm looking at the forty to sixty hour range.
Total.
Total. Yeah.
And is the grant through an MPO or through the?
The grant is through, well, there's one through DLCD. There's another one that's through ODOT. What the one through ODOT is what I'm most hopeful to get. And it's tied to the housing. Initiative, the governor's housing initiative and some of those funding. So it's about. Primarily housing, but with us, our development code is all centered on housing. Even our commercial code's got housing in it. There's very little of our code on the industrial side that needs more tweaking, but it's not included. So. That's where I'm trying to get kind of.
Or is that just county by county? Or is that, is that not something that happens in Oregon?
That's the first part.
A, a regional planning organization? The MPO, Metropole?
So our. We have an MPO, but they've just got into planning a little bit more recently.
Okay.
Um, they're trying to stand it up, but, um, I don't know. They've got capacity to take us on now.
In my previous, uh, work, uh, there's local technical assistance grants that, um, uh, cities such as Falmouth without the staff capacity to take on. Some of these bigger planning efforts, um, would lend a planner. Uh, to help align. And of course that's really helpful because they know the state, they know. Um, and they're, they're funded by. State funds to do this work specifically. So.
I think we'll get there with, with, um, our, with Campok or outside area, Metropolitan Planning Organization. I think we'll get there with them eventually. I don't know if they're there right now. In fact, I'm pretty confident they're not right now. And to be very frank, even the DLCD technical systems grants, I find myself arguing more with them than trying to comply with them. So. Those aren't overly helpful.
Well, that, that leads me into my question, my statement. Okay. Yeah, well, the, uh, our last meeting, we have this forty five minute presentation. Of all of these different items relating to. I'll use the word esoteric things. Because. Because I went back and, you know, one of them was is the front of the house needs to be, uh. Was it four feet back of the garage or in front of the garage? I don't remember what it was, but it was something very, very bizarre. And I went back and I did the, I did the rat trail back to the actual legislation. That that was being used under, that was under. And the legislation, to paraphrase it, because it's about this long, it's three pages long. Basically says you shall provide a walkable town. That's the law. That's what's in the law. And they, and all of this other stuff would come out of it. So what I'm asking moving forward. Is, is that when we start to, to be presented information or criteria, we need to have a clear understanding. What is law? What is stature, statute? And what is guidance? And making sure that we clearly understand that because we went, we sat and we listened to forty five minutes of guidance. There was nothing in there that was statutory that I could find. And there was nothing there that was based on law, other than it had to be walkable. And since this process. Three of us have been around and since I've been on the, on the council now for two and a half years. We started this process of revising this code two and a half years ago. And we down, been down many paths and. We spent a lot of time chasing our tail on things like this and this. And then if we were to get clear understanding from staff or from whoever our consultants are. What this is, what is driving this? Where is the criteria for this? And that'll give us a lot better understanding of what we need to deal with. And we can always. Do more than what they're asking us to do. We can always say we want to do this. I mean, it's like. We go back to the fire code, the fire code's going to tell us we can stick these buildings six feet apart. Or five feet apart, I think it is, we can go down to when the instance tonight. But we've said no, for a city, we want, we want five feet. And if you're over two stories, you gotta go another foot in your side yard setback. So that we can still do, but to clearly understand what the, what the criteria we're supposed to be following in the state is. Because I see DLCD, there's a lot of stuff that they've come towards us that is what their likes and what their wants are, but it's not what we should be doing. And we should be able to clearly understand that. So that's my comment.
Well, so your belief is that we don't have to do everything DLCD tells us to do?
I need to understand whether it's what it is. If it, if it, if it, if it's, if it's staff, if, if it's, if it's administrative guidelines, that's one thing. Okay, if it's the building code that's voted vets, like the, where there was, there was conflicts in that, in that presentation. A month ago to the state structural code, which is the code, the governing code of how buildings would be built in the state of Oregon. It supersedes planning. Okay, so, but, and I knew that by going through and I didn't challenge the gentleman on it. But I did ask the, quite a similar question to what I'm stating here at the end of the conversation. Is, is, what is it? Because. We know that in the, in, at the national level right now, there's a lot of consternation going on. As it relate to what bureaucrats are doing and what bureaucrats haven't done. And what they have, what they have taken, taken beyond the laws that have been legislated at the federal level. Well, the same thing's happening here.
Right.
And we need to, we can do what we want to as far as the criteria, but I sure as heck want to know why I'm doing it. Rather than just say, I'm going to do it because DLCD or somebody else says this. Michael brings up all the time, was it Senate Bill one oh, one hundred? Whatever it was back in the seventies, the land use bill. Yeah, where what's coming out of there is, appears to be in violation of that and that's law. So, and I know that's.
No, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I was just saying. I don't think they would, well, I guess my point would be is I don't think DLCD would agree with that. And maybe we don't care. And if that's the case.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean, I'm not overly bashful in DLCD. I think some of their guidance is good. I think some of their guidance is more appropriate in much larger metropolitan areas. But they blanket it, good for everybody. And I don't know that it is good for everybody. So I, I just, I continually have, feel like I'm having to push back on them on. What is required? What are you recommending and what actually is going to work in Philomath and do we actually want to see in Philomath? So. That's what I mean by that constant pushback with DLCD is I feel like they're always wanting big metro, what's best in Beaverton. And they want to see that at Philomath and that's not as appropriate.
Right, no, like.
And if it's a recommendation, great, we hear your recommendation. We don't, we don't accept it. If it's a requirement. What's the, what do we have to do? And we'll get compliant, right? Good point, noted. I'll make sure we note that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? We're gonna do this in under an hour, sure.
Thanks, everybody.